You visualize your dream, it comes true. And similarly, when you, you know, show students that this is your history. Right? This is where you came from or your people came from. Right? They they're able to see themselves as like, you know, engineers or like mathematicians or historians, whatever it is, you know, like, you build legacies.
That's that's all, that's all, that's all we ask, you know what I mean?
Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention, please?
Yo, what up? What up? It's your boy Rabino.
And it's DJ Erm in the building.
And you're listening to the Up and Up Podcast. Wait, what are we doing?
Oh, no, just listen.
Yes, 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 yes. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
What it do, what it do?
Ladies and gentlemen, you're tuning into the Up and Up Podcast. I'm your host Rabino.
And I'm DJ Erm, man.
What's up, dog? You good?
Yeah, I'm good, man. How you feeling?
Man, I'm feeling good. It's really cold outside.
Freezing.
Yeah. So I'm feeling good. Energy's right in here, right? Warm energy. Everybody's uplifting each other, right? Yep. Good?
Yeah, we're good.
Alright, let's get to it. Uh, this is your first time tuning in. This is the Up and Up Podcast. That was kinda weird. We just kept going back and forth. If this is your first time tuning in, this is the Up and Up Podcast, the podcast where we're focused on cultivating culture, right? Uh, nothing more, nothing less, man. We're here to provide a space for individuals, groups, movements, right? People who are out here carving lanes, man, right? Going after their dreams, paving paths, right? Occupying spaces, right? That need representation, all that, man. And uh, thank you guys for tuning in if this is your first time as well. I wanna make sure we shout out to consistent supporters, listeners, viewers. And even if you don't watch the show, if you just pull up and say, "It was good," and you enjoy the movement.
Even if you just notice.
Yeah, if you just know the movement, man. Shout out to you guys, man. We definitely appreciate it. We appreciate all the energy and the support. Um, and not just us, as well as these guests that we have on this show. They definitely appreciate it. So make sure to reach out to the guests, man. Right? Connect to, connect with them, especially if you, if you're in the city. They're accessible, man. I can't, I can't stress that enough. Um, now, if you wanna continue supporting the podcast, you know what to do. You can follow all the episodes on YouTube, SoundCloud, iTunes, and Spotify, right? What they gotta do, rate, review, subscribe.
And like it too?
Yes, please, show some love, show some love, for sure. Um, also, if you're not already, please make sure to follow us on all social media platforms, at underscore the Up and Up. Right? We got a lot of great things coming, trying to close off the year, right? Just keep it on the hush, right? Um, another announcement I do wanna make and make sure we make this clear. Uh, episode sixty is approaching, right? This is episode fifty-five. So episode sixty is approaching, five episodes away. What happens on episode sixty, man?
We appreciate the listeners.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how do we do that? We got the Listener Appreciation Week, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, so um, and if you're, if you're a first time listener, Listener Appreciation Week is when we allow the listeners to take over the show. I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty much what it is. They come up, take over the show. So make sure to send your submissions. If you wanna enter to win, all you gotta do is send us a submission and let us know what your favorite episode was and tell us why. Simple. You send it to the direct message at underscore the Up and Up and we'll get it popping, right?
Yeah.
Alright, cool. Any other announcements?
Nah, man.
We good?
Yeah.
You got like a chill vibe right now, man.
Man, I'm good right now, man. I'm trying to get the show on the road.
Shout out Good Vibes Only. I like your hoodie.
Oh, yeah, that's why too, yeah.
Shout out the squad.
Shout out Good Vibes Only.
Now, for the first time listeners out there, if this is, you know, the first time you encounter this show, we, 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 we come up here and we bring guests up here to provide context, right, to success.
Yeah.
Um, to the grind, right? It's, nothing's overnight. Don't let them, don't let them fool you, right? Don't let the gram fool you. Nothing's overnight. And um, today's guest, I would say is a woman who's, who's taken it upon herself to, to really help lead the charge in both education and equity, right? Uh, but she's doing it in her own unique way, which I think is important, right? You can't, can't really mimic nobody else. You gotta, you gotta carve your own lane, right? I just said that's what they're doing, right? Um, I would say she's a hardworking cultivat- uh, culture cultivating, uh, person in the city of Seattle and she's doing everything she can to keep everything on the up and up, obviously. Uh, to give you a little insight on the work she has been doing and will continue to do, I, I'm almost certain. Uh, she's an advocate for helping kids get opportunities to pursue higher education. Um, she herself has actually received a master's from the U of Dub. The UW Huskies, right? Shout out all the Huskies out there. You know, we're coops, but you know, you know, shout out to Huskies. Um, and in doing that, uh, they actually led her to help, uh, do more work in the city of Seattle's community to solve issues within the schooling system uh, that are impeding the progress of underserved students, right? So this, she's really putting on the hat of importance right there, right? Um, and currently, above all, right? Above all, currently, just to stay current, uh, she's currently running as a candidate, actually, for the Seattle School Board for position number three. Um, and she's here with us to kick it and have some dope dialogue, right?
Yeah.
Let's get to it, man. Our guest is none other than the change agent herself, Rebecca Muniz. Can we get a round of applause? Yeah. How you doing?
I'm feeling really good. This is my first podcast and I love the hype. Like, I've never been hyped so much.
You know what I say is, uh, every-
I need to hire you as my hype man.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll talk logistics after the show. You can never have enough jobs. Uh, but I always say, you know, to, uh, every good album needs a great intro, right? So, you know, let's make a good album, right, Erm?
Yeah, always, man, you know?
Uh, but thank you for coming to the show, Rebecca. We definitely appreciate having you. Um, now, to kinda give you some insight, the way we start our shows, we do a quote of the day. Um, just kinda get the vibe right, get the mood right, um, set the tone, and I don't tell the quotes to go. I'm not allowed to tell the quotes, not yet at least.
Like sad about that, bro. It's cool.
Quote, what you got, man?
So the quote of the day today is, "Education is the passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today."
One more time, one more time.
I was about to ask one time too.
So, "Education is the passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today."
That's good.
Yeah.
Man, you've been coming through with the quotes.
Malcolm X.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's dope. That sounds like very, like, just assertive right there.
Yeah.
Um, and we bring in the quotes, obviously, cuz they're great quotes to get the conversation started, but it's something that also aligns with our guests and what they're doing. Um, so, like I said, we do wanna kinda provide context to the success and you're dir- uh, like as I mentioned, you're currently doing a lot of work in the city of Seattle. Obviously, running for Seattle School Board and a lot of other things you're doing. But let's take it back a little bit. I, I do wanna kinda get to the beginning. Um, so you grew up in California, am I correct?
No, I actually grew up in Utah.
Utah, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. I grew up in Utah and um, I moved around a lot, actually. Uh, from a very young age, I like went to maybe ten different elementary schools. Um, yeah, I was raised by a single mom and um, being raised by a single mom undocumented meant that we had to move around to where work was. Or wherever housing was available, right? Uh, the most affordable thing, um, sleeping on couches or, you know, friends', uh, basements, things like that. So there wasn't a lot of permanent, like, housing, uh, but, yeah, so that, I grew up in the larger Salt Lake City area. And then in, like, high school and middle school, I was able to settle down in West Side, which was Kearns.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I'm not familiar with Utah at all.
Kearns, shout out, K-Town.
Shout out K-Town.
Whoever's watching.
No, that's dope, that's dope. Um, and so, um, yeah, I was kinda, I'm just curious, kinda like, your upbringing because, I mean, obviously, it seems like you're someone who loves to get involved, right? Maybe, I don't know when that began for you, but I guess, do you, can you like recall when that became a thing? Cuz obviously, if you're moving around and things aren't as stable, you probably don't have enough time to give to other people when you're trying to figure out your own situation. So like, at what point did that kinda spark in you?
I, I would say it started in high school, right? Like, um, that's where I started running for, like, uh, I remember being the Student Activities Committee President, right? Because I didn't make it to the Student Body Officer position. And I was like, well, I'll be the president of the Student Activities Committee instead.
Optimistic right there.
Oh, yeah, I keep going. Yeah, so it, I, I would, it started in high school, honestly, like, yeah.
Okay.
That's cool. So, what, whoa, what was like the whole experience like growing up in Utah?
Oh, my gosh. Um, Utah is, um, it's a bit more conservative. Um, it's very religious in Utah. Um, there, the religion there that's predominantly practiced is Mormonism.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the Latter Day Saints Church. Uh, there's a lot of people that are members of the church. Um, you know, uh, kids in high school go to something called seminary. Uh, so seminary is kind of like a sp- a, a place where you learn songs and you learn scriptures, uh, from the Book of Mormon.
Okay.
Um, so a lot of my friends were Mormon growing up. Um, I wasn't Mormon, um, and, yeah, so it wasn't until like, like, ah, let's see, ca- like freshman year?
Yeah.
Where I actually did convert for like maybe a year and then I was like, no.
I'm actually curious too. Like, what was that like not being Mormon and being, uh, surrounded by all of that? Like,
I, I mean-
Was it hard to make friends out there?
No, not really, because everybody's very friendly. Like, if you know Mormons, they're just very kind and very nice, outgoing people. Like, the entire religion is, uh, very centered on community.
Okay.
Yeah, so they have like a weekly activity where like families get together and read scriptures. So, it's all centered on, on community, right? They're very well organized to make sure that you feel connected, right? So, if you are new, they pair you up with somebody that like visits you monthly and checks in on you. Yeah, yeah. Um, so making friends was not difficult, you know? It, sometimes it, um, like, they would invite me to church and so I'd go to church, you know? Or like any kinda church activity, right? Cuz they're, like I said, very social.
Yeah.
Uh, so I enjoyed it.
Okay.
You know, food.
I mean, plus, I mean, if that's where you grew up, it's not, you probably wouldn't think anything other.
I didn't, yeah, and I think, I, I didn't think anything of it until I moved outside of the, you know,
Yeah.
the state where I started noticing, you know, like, for example, like liquor stores are not open on certain days or like,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
you know, not drinking coffee or like tea, soda, right? There's all of these things that the religion practices.
That's a rule?
Yeah, yeah, they don't drink coffee or caffeinated beverages.
Wow, I didn't even know that.
Yeah.
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 So, a lot of different things that like affect the way that you, um, live, right? And socialize, right? Because outside of the state, like, people socialize, uh, with drinking, right? Like, a lot of people drink and that's how they make friends or like, you know, have a good time.
Yeah.
So I-
Keep your jobs, you know, those happy hours.
Yeah, so I had a lot of really good, clean, good, clean fun, wholesome fun.
That's dope. Um, so what, what, obviously, you went to the University of Washington, so is that what brought you to Seattle?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I, I like, so I went to University of U- Utah State University.
Okay.
And after mo- after graduating, I decided that I wanted to, you know, um, give back to my community, like, continue doing, uh, community service work. So I joined, uh, an organization called Public Allies that helps change the leadership in nonprofits.
Okay.
So that it's more diverse, so that it's more people of color, people from diverse backgrounds. Um, so I joined that group and it was like an AmeriCorps service program. And I worked in the Bay Area for a couple of years and from that experience was what brought me to Seattle to like pursue a master's degree in education policy and leadership.
Yeah, I feel it, I feel it. And I, I think, I'm kinda curious on when you may have been, cuz I, I would assume that Utah isn't the most diverse place, right?
It's not.
So-
But it, there is pockets of-
Yeah, for sure.
Right, yeah.
Sure. And, but, I guess, so I, like, when, cuz you said you went into, you wanted to make a change in leadership, right? And then make it more diverse, but like, when, when did you kind of be, when were you introduced to more diversity yourself? To, to realize, okay, there's more people out here.
In the Bay Area.
Okay. Shout out to Beto.
Shout out to Beto.
Yeah, the Bay Area, like, it was a huge culture shock. Um, I, I remember like the community that I worked with was predominantly black, right? And I was, I just remember being like, whoa, black people. Right? And I was just like, dang, I'm in a completely different space. You know, there was also a lot of API people, um. So I was just like overwhelmed for, you know, the first month and then I realized, like, I was in a small town. I was in a small town.
Yeah. Traveling's important, man, for sure.
I mean, I've traveled before. I love traveling. Like, I've traveled to Spain and Ghana.
Yeah.
And, you know, all different kinds of countries, but in comparison to where I had grown up, it was a completely different space, you know? It, it, from the way people dressed to the way people behaved. Right? Just the entire demeanor of the Bay Area is like-
Yeah.
Really is.
Yeah.
It's infectious, for sure.
Yeah. So, so what was the experience like moving from the Bay to Seattle and like going to UW out here?
Um, I really missed the Bay Area because the Bay Area had re- had a, I think, has a really, uh, they have a strong culture around social justice, right? And it's not just like a couple of people there, right? It's like almost the entire city.
Yeah.
Right? Like, here, it's a, it, it feels like kind of a small town here because you know who are the people that are trying to make change in the community. Right? There in the Bay Area, like, I might meet one organizer and I might not see them again, right? Because they are, it's such a large city that you don't really see the same people all the time.
Yeah.
Right? Even if you're an organizer. So I really missed that, right? Like, there was a diverse pool of thoughts, right? Like, even if you were an organizer, there was another organizer who, you know, felt the same way about like housing affordability. But their approach to solving it was a completely different way.
Yeah, no, that's actually a good point because I think, obviously, the Bay Area, Oakland, like, the history, whether you talk about the Black Panther Party and and it's like, I think your, your community takes to what is being pushed, like the energy in the city, right? So if that's the energy that was, you know, most prominent, that even the a- average citizen, you know, could just be the regular guy, the mailman or whoever, like, he's gonna be picked up on that. He's gonna, he's gonna be affected by that. Or she's gonna be affected by that, right?
Oh, yeah.
Um, so no, that's, that's, that's actually a really great point. And I, I think Seattle definitely, I mean, for, for me personally, I think there, there has been for a long time a disconnect, for sure.
Mm-hmm. And just like the energy there, right? Like, when you're in the Bay Area, there is a bit of an undercurrent that keeps you afloat, right? That keeps you moving, right? Because everybody's kind of on that same wavelength of like social justice and like,
Progress.
Progress and just like, here in Seattle, you kinda have to create that wave yourself, right?
That's actually true.
You, if you wanna ride waves, you have to make them yourself, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, I see, I see what you mean by that.
Yeah, they're, they're just more like aggressive. Like, it's like, uh, it's like, they're willing to fight, or they've been fighting.
They've been fighting, oh, yeah. I mean, we've been fighting too, you know?
Yeah.
History, the history of Seattle is, i- is a little bit similar, right? Like, we, we also had a Black Panther Party here, but, um, it's just a different kind of-
Yeah.
Fighting.
I think it's a type, I think it's also like the type of resistance your city is facing, right?
Yeah.
Seattle might be facing resistance, but it's not like a huge overwhelming resistance to where the whole city feels it. It's more so like, these people over here feel it and nobody else knows about it. Whereas, in the Bay Area, it was like, on Front Street. You know what I mean? So, everybody gotta fight, you know?
Yeah.
That's good, that's, that's good. So, UW, um, so you, you, I'm curious too, why Seattle? Like, why, I, why didn't, like, why not just go back to, you know, the Bay or even Utah, who knows, and try to really do the work you're doing? Cuz running for the school board, you found some, obviously, you found a lot of issues within the schools, the schooling system as a whole, so what made you wanted to sta- what made you wanna stay here and really plant your roots here and really try to help, you know, starting with the Seattle School District?
Well, it was a process of, of elimination, right? Um, if we talk about like where I was accept- accepted into schools, right? This, the, this is one of the schools I was accepted to and so I was like, yeah, that's a good school, right? I had also heard that UW had, like, they talked about social justice, but they also practiced kinda what they preached. And so I was like, okay, I wanna, I wanna be in that space. Um, and I didn't see myself returning to Utah because of that conservative culture. Uh, I'm queer and I wanted to be out and like, you know, be in a space where I could grow and flourish. And I didn't see that, I didn't see Utah as a place for that. Uh, my parents are also immigrants. And, you know, this is a safe city, you know, as much as we, you know, there's a lot of room for growth um, in regards to, you know, upkeeping that value and that principle. This is still a better option, in my opinion, for immigrants. Um, so that was another option, you know? I was like, if I wanna start a family, if I wanna like bring my family here, or if they wanna move here, I'd want them to be in a space that feels safe to them. And so, in the Bay Area, I, I could've gone back to the Bay Area, but I realized that I had already started learning more about Seattle when I had started my program.
Yeah.
Um, so I decided that like, this would be a, a good space to kinda settle down for a couple of years and, you know, see where, where life takes me here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate.
Yeah, I mean, the Bay is just so, it's really intense.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a, it's an intense city and I, I don't know, like, the activism there has been going on for years, right?
Yeah.
So here I saw an opportunity to, you know, make a difference in a space that, um, I, I felt like I could make a difference in.
Stuck.
So, um, you did research on s- um, the racial equity in Seattle public schools while you were here?
Yeah, so I did the racial equity teams.
Oh, teams, okay.
And I also did, um, some research on equity-based school improvement.
Yeah.
And on the fam- so that, I mean, that's like kinda the same thing. But I also looked at the organizing in Rainier Beach.
Okay.
So by parents and how they were able to organize themselves to bring the International Baccalaureate Program to their school.
Yeah.
So, that was really fun.
Yeah. Yeah, I just asked that cuz I'm like a product of Seattle Schools, so I was like, okay.
Okay.
Definitely want, yeah, I wanna know, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great, it's a, it's a great initiative. We'll see where it goes, you know? It's going in a good direction, I would say.
And I'm also curious about this because you, you've kinda, you know, I mean, obviously, you're putting yourself in a leadership role, right? Um, so I don't think leaders are just born overnight and I don't think, I mean, yeah, you can definitely, you definitely have to have confidence in yourself to do these, to jump into these roles and take on these jobs and these responsibilities. Um, but did you have anybody, like, maybe a mentor or someone who's, who may have been doing the work elsewhere, that helped you kinda like make this decision or was it? I, I don't know, like, how, how does someone say, "I'm just gonna run for the Seattle School Board"? How do you get there? You know what I mean? I'm just like-
Yeah.
Well, there was absolutely mentors involved.
Okay, cool.
Right? I don't wanna, you know, just say that I'm just little old man.
Yeah, it's, but it's important for listeners and viewers to know that it's okay to ask for help and, you know, even though you might wanna do something great. There's people that can help you along the way.
Yeah. Yeah, there was definitely mentors, like my advisor, you know, at UW during my, uh, program. Uh, was someone that I really looked up to, right? So she was, uh, someone that I would bounce ideas off of and the director in the Bay Area who was, uh, at the nonprofit where I started, right? There was also the advisor that I had at Utah State, right? Who was also really supportive. But when it came to running for office, um, I did have a few members of, in our community who were, you know, encouraging me, like, you can do this, like, you can run, have you thought about this?
Yeah.
Um, but what first happened was I started getting involved with, um, some campaigns with Pramila Jayapal's
Okay.
campaign and just, you know, organizing some volunteers for her, uh, and her field team more specifically, right? Like Sean Scott, Erica Sklar, right? So I was around those guys. I don't know if you know them. Um, you know, Sean Scott's running for city council right now and Erica Sklar is also, you know, continuing to run great campaigns like sixteen thirty-one.
Dope.
Um, so I was around those folks and they were also really encouraging about, you know, my value as a woman of color in these spaces and I, you know, was encouraged to stay involved. Um, and it wasn't until one of my other good friends, Yvette McGonagall, told me about, uh, training that she wanted me to be sup- to support her at. And I'm like, okay.
So you just, she's like, just come along?
Yeah, just come along. And I was like, sure, you know, and I didn't really think that the outcome would be me running for office, right? I thought the outcome would be me supporting my friend.
And maybe learning a thing or two.
Yeah, right? I saw it as a learning opportunity. I'm one of those people that's like, yeah, let's try new things.
Wow.
Right? And from that experience was me learning about, because th- through the training, you're basically going through a um, like a hypothetical run, right? You're learning about fundraising, you're learning about what field means, you're learning about all the different components of a campaign. And that really opened my eyes to the world of like, politics. And not just politics, but also how, how, um, how white politics is and how non-inclusive it is for people of color and for like immigrants or people with, um, you know, underrepresented backgrounds. And that also was really like jaw-dropping.
Yeah.
Um, and then I just, I felt like I could, I, I could do this.
Yeah.
Right? Like, I was like, well, I now have the knowledge of a campaign, how I could run a campaign.
Yeah.
I have the policy knowledge and the experience, right? Um, and I think a lot of the time, well, we know that a lot of the time people doubt themselves, right? The self-doubt is a dream killer.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Talk about that, definitely.
Real, like, or procrastination, like, a lot of people tell themselves, well, I'll run in ten years when I'm ready, right? It's like, okay, well-
When you're ever gonna be ready, though.
Right. Or, or, or like attachment, right? I'm attached to the idea that I'm gonna be I, I, a doctor or something, right? They, we, like, all of those things together really kill a dream.
Yeah.
But for me, I was like, well, I believe in myself. I'm gonna keep trying this, right? And so after that, I looked at like, okay, well, what positions, what positions are elected positions, right? And I didn't realize that school board was an elected position. I realized, I thought people hired the school board.
Yeah.
Right? But no, you know, they're, they're elected positions and it, you, it's the entire political process that goes into a school board campaign, which is really interesting because we don't get paid.
Wow. Wait, so, c- c- wait, so let's take it back a little bit cuz I'm curious too because it seems like a lot of these positions, like you said, they may be restrictive, right, for people of color and whatnot. Um, but then there's a long process just to even get a chance to run, right? And there's a lot of information that we don't even know, that we don't have access to, right?
Right.
Um, so what you talked about when you, when you went to go support your friend is important to stay open-minded, right? And understand, like, we may feel confident, but we still gotta be diligent, right? And, and teaching ourselves what we don't know, you know, and
Right.
Just be, be, yeah, be humble, like-
Oh, yeah. I'm always seeking out new, new things, new knowledge.
That's dope, though. That was the universe, though. I definitely believe the universe was what led you to that, that meeting.
Probably, yeah, probably.
So, what are like some of like, the steps, like, after you're like, okay, I'm gonna run for this position? Like, or like the formalities and stuff that go behind it?
The formalities, yeah, for sure.
People who don't know.
Um, so, once, once you've trained yourself, right? Once you know how to fundraise and how to do field work, right? Deciding whether or not you're gonna have a consultant, things like that, uh, then you really sit down about, and you really sit down and think about what are the issues that I care about in my community and what are the issues that I wanna see changed? And then you think about what position has the power to make that change?
Yeah.
And with that position, like, what are the prerequisites and requirements to be able to, you know, uh, get elected to that position? And after that, then you look at your list, right? Like, okay, well, I could run for city council member, I could run for school board director, I could run for King County Council. And that's when you, you know, make that decision, okay, well, I'm gonna run for, I'm gonna run for school board.
Yeah.
Right? That's kinda how the process for me was, right? Where, where am I qualified? Where do I wanna see change?
Yeah.
Okay, school board it is.
Okay, I, 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 I wanna get into kind of your, I guess, your niche causes or things you're, you're really trying to address. Um, because I think when people get into politics, period, it's like, it can be very broad. Or when you say, hey, I'm running for Seattle School Board, like, someone like me who doesn't really know all that exists, the issues that exist, I might think, okay, what, you're just gonna run the whole school district, right? But-
I wish. Here we go.
Yeah, well, you gotta start somewhere. But look, so I wanna, I wanna get into some of the things you definitely are fighting for, like, um, providing ethnic studies um, in schools, um, increasing girls to participate in STEM activities, um, more after-school programs, things like that. But can you talk about, um, I guess, how, why you think these things are important for the school system?
It's all, i- i- it comes down to empowering students of color, right? And empowering them to an extent that they can, uh, achieve all that they want to achieve, right? That is the ultimate goal, to make sure that all students have an equal opportunity to succeed, is my goal, right? And from what I realize is that, due to certain policies that we have in place and certain like racial bias that exists, we do not offer an equal opportunity for all of our students, right? And so, that's why those things that I have focused on are the things that I'm focusing on. Because I see that those are the barriers for our students of color getting that kind of opportunity, right? That those are the barriers for our students of color, getting that kind of opportunity, right? And education, it, the 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 purpose of the education is to, you know, build confidence in our students. It's to make sure that they're critical thinkers, right? That they're, you know, functioning in our society and. You know, achieving what they want to achieve, right? Whether it's a, it's a hip-hop artist or a basketball player or a, you know, scientist, like, whatever it is you wanna do, like. Our schools should be, you know, being able to help you launch to those, to those places. And right now, I don't believe we're doing that, right?
And I I feel you on that, cause I think even like a lot of us growing up, um, just the the like, the curriculum we were being taught. Right? Like when you say ethnic studies, I'm like, whoa. Cause for me, honestly, ethnic studies was watching Roots for like two weeks, and then I was like, okay. And then it's just back to, you know, the traditional American history that they constantly teach, um, students, so. Um, I think that is important for sure. I think we need to see ourselves in some of these books that they're teaching us. Uh, because we we are in those books that they're teaching, but we're just not, or that they're not teaching, we just need to be exposed to them.
Yeah, I mean, the history of our public school system excluded people of color intentionally, right? When people are educated, it gives them power, right? Like Malcolm talks about that, right? Like when you are prepared, when you have an education, you are empowered and you can see a future for yourself, right? And similarly. Right now, kids don't see themselves in the future. Kids don't see themselves in leadership. And that's why I'm trying to change it.
Or even talking about like the curriculum, like, when I went to college, I felt like I wasn't really prepared for it. Coming from Seattle Public Schools. Public schools, I just felt like I wasn't as prepared as some of the people around me, like, I mean, I went to Wazoo, so it was predominantly white, so. I was just like, dang, I feel like that had more advantage than I did, just from like, from jump, you know, so.
I felt the same, yeah, I felt the same. I, you know, the public school that I went to, I think. If I would have seen myself in the curriculum, or if I would have understood, you know, my own culture better. I think it definitely helps instill a a level of confidence, right? Because you, you can see yourself in that position, right? We we talk about this when we say, like, what do you wanna accomplish, right? And we talk about like visualizing your dream, right? Like, vision board, like, you know, people think it's corny, but it's real. No, but really, when you visualize your dream, it comes true, and similarly, when you. You know, show students that this is your history, right? This is where you came from, or your people came from, right? They they're able to see themselves as like, you know, engineers, or like mathematicians, or historians, whatever it is, you know, like. You build legacies.
That's that's all, that's all, that's all we ask, you know what I mean? You know what I mean? It's like, don't fool us, you know, for however many years, twelve years, and then be like, alright, go be successful, it's like. And be confident in yourself to go be successful, like, ha, like, all I see is people that don't look like me who've been doing the stuff that I'm trying to learn, it's just like. It's a little bit backwards, but I'm glad that you're trying to bring change to that. I'm also curious about the position of. Just getting into politics, right? Getting into an o- getting into office. What are your thoughts on, um, like political correctness? Like, is it hard for you to kind of like, jump in, yeah, jump in and be like, alright, I'm Rebecca, but it's like, well, no, I'm still Rebecca, it's like, but I'm. Which one are you, you know what I mean? Cause you see it all the time, and I think that's what kind of steers people away from politics, and they're like, oh, they switched up. They're just, they're reading the script or whatever, so how do you deal with the balance of, obviously, staying. In line with your campaign and making sure you gotta be focused, but also showing people who you really are.
I mean, if you think about like, and it took me a while to learn this, you know, and. My mentors are probably like, oh, don't say the wrong thing, but like, eh, campaigns are pretty simple. Like, there's, there, like, the mechanics are like, you know, fundraise, knock doors, and, you know, endorsement. And then there's like the e- the, I think, the. The the other side where like, you know, there's the, um, the betrayals, or like the. The deals under the door, and in my position, it's a little less, it's a more tame, you know, no one's handing me envelopes. You know what I mean? But like, um, it's pretty simple to run a campaign, but I think that. There is that aspect of authenticity, right? Being authentic, and you do have to stay on message, right? There are certain things that we wanna be consistent about, right? So, me talking about ethnic studies and after-school programs. Right? And like, removing discipline, you know, discipline policies that historically, uh, you know, disproportionately affect students of color, like. These things I've been saying for months, right? Like, I feel like a robot. But it, there's a point to it, right? There, because you haven't heard it. You haven't heard it, you know, maybe somebody else in, you know, northeast Seattle has heard me say it. But everybody has to be on that same page, right? So, maybe that's why people think that, you know, sometimes politicians are being a little scripted. Because they are saying the same thing all the time, but at the same time, they do. They don't wanna like upset people sometimes, right? So for me, I've just had to tell myself that. My true supporters will support me for who I am, right? For what I'm bringing to the table, um, and the values that I have. Right? And so the values that I have are, you know, creative expression, right? Like, I try to put out content that I. Feel is like authentic to what I believe in, right? Like, um, like my video, my campaign video, for example. You know, that was me telling you my story, like authentically trying to show you where I came from, what I'm about. Right? As well as like, the people that I, you know, have brought onto my team, right? Like, we. It's all, it's all aim, it's all based on my values, right? And so that's what I've told myself is that like, if I stick true. If I stay true to my values, then I'm being myself, right? And so that's been my guiding compass throughout this whole process, is like. Staying true to my values, like, am I being honest? Right? When I'm at a forum, am I being honest? Yes, okay, then we're good, right? Or am I being, like, authentic? Right? Yes, I am, okay. Um, and someone told me, one of one of the representatives told me, like. You have to think about this opportunity as an opportunity to tell your story, right? It's not like a performance. Right? Because that's when you lose that authenticity, when you start to see this as a performance, right? No, it's my story.
Some politicians put on a show.
I feel like I see it all the time, cause like, sometimes I wouldn't really know a politician, I'll just know what policies they're for, or not for. You know, so like, the fact that, like, you're able to pull people in, like, this is my story, I feel like that. That holds a lot more weight to like, the general public, you know, like, well, especially for me, you know?
And you gotta, you gotta live in your truth, that's just kind of how I feel, and, um, I think it is important though, like, even if you're continuously pushing the same message. Like, even on this podcast, our announcements are the same every episode, for a reason. But but it's like, you never know who may be listening for the first time, you never know who may be doing for the first time, so you gotta make sure that they're getting that same. Same announcement that the last person got for the first time, so I I definitely agree with you on that. Um, and yeah, I think, um, cause you know, we have a lot of people who listen to the show who are, you know, carving their own lanes, trying to build their own paths. Um, it may not be politics, but it may be something else, and so it's always good for them to hear about. Just how important it's to stay true and just stay, stick to the script, man.
Like, if you, if you value, I don't know, something else, then that's you, right? And don't, the the biggest thing is, you have to be careful of. I think people sometimes trying to change what you should be doing, and people are very opinionated. But you don't always have to take people's opinions to heart, you don't always have to put that into action, so.
Big facts. So we're almost there, uh, um, what is, November fifth, right? Election Day? Yeah, have you got a chance to like, well, I guess you got six days to grind, but like, have you got a chance to kind of like. Erm has his perfect quote, where he's like, sometimes you work so hard, you don't get a chance to see your own highlights? Have you got a chance to kind of like?
Like, look at my highlights? Ye- mm, yes and no, yes and no, I've. Like, the the funny thing is that, like, now that the election is down to the like, the last minute. There, there's more attention on me, there's people paying attention more, right? And, for example. There was a moment, like back a couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago or so, where we received all of the legislative district endorsements. And Seattle, yeah, thank you, and Seattle is comprised of seven districts, seven different, um, legislative districts. And we announced it, and it received some, some level of love, but now that I've more recently pushed it out again. It's received way more love.
You got it, you got it, I don't know, I I don't have a problem like pushing something that's positive and that needs to be seen.
Yeah, well, it was just like. We we pushed it out again, is what I'm trying to say, is like, we we pushed it out that one time, and it was like, oh, that's cool. But now, and maybe it was the way that we like packaged it, right? Like, we actually put it into a nice. Yeah, it's all about timing, like, people say that, like, with politics, like, if a politician runs. If a politician runs at a particular time, it's so cru- it's critical, like the timing, right? Like with Obama, like, when he ran, that's when he needed to run, right? So there is like, a golden formula for like. Timing.
Picking when you wanna jump in.
Like, when you're gonna jump in, or when you're gonna post something, right? Like, there's specific times that are actually more opportu- like, more opportune for you.
Yeah, that's true. Strategic, you gotta be stra- strategic.
Yeah, it's like, where were you at, bro? Yeah, he's probably focusing on the timing, you know, so.
Yeah, it is, there's a, it's like, kind of like we were saying, like, you, you are brewing, right? You are, you're cooking. You're not, you're not ready.
You just gotta align with the universe, man, that's my, that's how I talk, that's how I think about it. Someone once said, you don't have to grind, you just have to align. Yeah, I didn't say that, that's not my quote, but it would have been my quote. Um, alright, well Rebecca, we always wanna make sure we kind of give you a chance to talk about maybe some things on the horizon, obviously. Campaign is at the end of its run almost, so you've got six days. Um, how can people, or is there anything you want them to come and get involved with, volunteer? Um, this is a chance for you to kind of just give them some info on that.
Sure, well, if people wanna volunteer, they can, you know, uh, message us. Or my contact info is on the Facebook, uh, event page. You can also just, you know, send me a message, I'm really, really responsive. And if they wanna knock doors, we're, we'll be knocking doors this weekend. If they wanna make a donation, right, we have approximately three thousand dollars we still need to raise. So if there's somebody out there with some, uh, money. You know, drop some love, and those are the big key things right now, right? We have to knock doors, we have to talk to people in the community. Uh, if people don't have money, and if you're not able-bodied and can't knock doors, then just tell your friends. Sharing this podcast, uh, sharing your support publicly makes a big difference, because. Like we said, our communities have been disengaged for a really long time, you know, for a good reason, people don't trust politicians, people don't trust the process. Uh, but we have to change that, and we have to talk to each other and build relationships, so that's been my whole thing, is like. Building relationships, so if you tell your friends, you know, like our page, things like that, it makes a big difference.
So where can people find you, as far as like, social media, website?
Yeah, so I'm on Instagram, at Elect Muniz, M U N I Z. And I'm also on Twitter, at Elect Muniz twenty nineteen, and Facebook, at Elect Muniz. And then my website, guess what it is? Yeah, electmuniz.com, electmuniz everywhere, uh, pretty, pretty.
Definitely, well, um, before we get you out of here, we always ask this question to all our guests, uh, to kind of cap off the show, and it also casts what's ahead. So if you can, what's one word to describe what keeps you on the up and up? And you can like, kind of explain it.
The up and up, well, what does the up and up mean to you guys?
Oh, she flipped it on me. Are you asking me what my one word is?
Well, like, what does the up and up mean to you?
Um, I mean, for me, it's more so, um, an opportunity to to inspire, right? To create lanes. Um, and really just to reclaim narratives, that's, that's what we're doing through content, um, and keeping people on the up and up, right? So them seeing re- representatives such as yourself and other guests we have on this show, like, you cannot be inspired by it, right?
So pretty much, um, well, the short and sweet version is pretty much to just stay, uh, grounded, but keep going. And like, don't stop, so, um, pretty much like. A- a- anything that's rooted in you, like, keep your roots, keep your values, like you brought up earlier, but make sure that you keep going and you don't. Let that change too, like, too much, you know, so.
Well, mine was gonna be a desire for freedom, so that keeps me up.
Freedom?
The desire for freedom.
Take that.
I I'm a politician, I gotta be free.
Wh- why is that important?
Does that, freedom?
Desire for it, I guess.
Oh, okay, well, I think, you know, um. If you don't want something, if you're, if you're, if you're not striving for something, I think it can be. It can put you in a complacent space, right? So. I, yeah, gotta make sure you stay free.
One of my favorite quotes, uh, don't be surprised if you never get, or don't, don't be surprised if you don't, if you don't get what you never wanted.
Don't be surprised if you never get what you never want.
No, don't be surprised, if you don't get, if you don't get what you never wanted.
What you, okay. Oh, I get it, yes, oh my gosh, so many quotes today.
We're just gonna call this episode quotes. Yeah, well, um, but yeah, again, Rebecca, we do appreciate you coming to the show, uh, we appreciate the work you're doing. Um, we definitely, uh, support you and, um, wish you much success. Congrats on the campaign, you know, and, um, hopefully, uh, we can get you in office, uh, I believe it'll happen, and, you know, we can make some changes in the Seattle School Board. And then it'll, it'll only start here, and then it'll continue on, right?
And then you'll be like, I was on the Rubell Show.
Um, so, with that said, I think it's safe to say Rebecca Nunes is officially a member of the Up and Up, can we get a round of applause?